Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day, Maloney and Moore's Cradle, I'm Monte Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 136, Class 136. What did we learn in Class 135? Well, we were taking a little bit deeper dive into the word self-determination, right? We learned a lot more about that. Understanding where self-determination start off as two words, then it was combined by a hyphen, it turned into what? A compound adjective. But a compound adjective, an adjective describes a noun. So when we were reading over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Article 55, it talked about self-determination of peoples, right? But peoples is a noun, so self-determination is describing the noun, which is peoples, but the word peoples in itself is still what? A generic word. Now it's on the people to determine their self-determination as to what nationality they are, right? So we started learning Article 55, and Article 55 of the Charter, keep it in mind that Barack H. Obama wanted the Moors to go back and read the Charter. This is why he signed the Rights Indigenous People in the year 2010. Barack H. Obama was not signing the Rights Indigenous People for Indians. He knows that Indian is an adjective. He knew that indigenous people were Moors. He knew about the Moors Treaties. So he was trying to go to Cairo, Egypt, to talk about who? Muslims. Did he talk about Indians? No. He talked about the Treaty of Tripoli, right? Of 1796, Article 11. Does Article 11 say anything about Indians? No. So you have to understand that even when Barack H. Obama got back and signed the Rights Indigenous People, who followed up, right? To let Barack H. Obama know, they look, "I'm gonna try to utilize my pen as well to help you out, Barack H. Obama." It was who? Rahm Emanuel. So Rahm Emanuel signs a proclamation through his office of mayor, and he talks about who? The Moravites, i.e. Moroccans. And he says, "You Moroccans need to do what? Go back and do what? Based upon your self-determination, all your rights is guaranteed through the Charter." Isn't that what he said in his letter? Did he say anything about Indians? No. Why am I talking about Indians right now? Keep it in mind, that's not a negative. I'm not talking about Indians in general, right? I'm not talking about the Indians who actually have treaties with the United States, right? I'm talking about black people in droves, and now these Moors are talking about they're gonna be Indians because the Moors America thing ain't working out. What I'm trying to say is, you must understand that Barack H. Obama and Rahm Emanuel knows who the true indigenous people are of the land. Rahm Emanuel said in his letter, "The indigenous people are who?" The Moravites, i.e. the Moroccans. He never said Indians. So what we learned in Class 135, I took a little bit deeper dive into understanding what is the status of Indians, and all Indians come under the Civil and Criminal Jurisdiction of the United States. However, Moroccans are actually in a position to govern over the United States of America according to our treaties, because the United States of America is geographically located where? In Morocco. So what you should take away from Class 135 is this: The Moors have delayed their own justice, all because we refuse to go back and read law. We have been so busy reading literature and studying the internal municipal laws of the United States, federal corporations. We've been reading the municipal laws of the several charter states, instead of reading international law, instead of starting with the Charter and understanding the United Nations' resolutions coming on, like Resolution 1514 of 1960, it was a decolonization resolution, where the member states came together in 1960 and said, "These Moors have a right to their independence as Moors," right? "And their state, which is the Empire Morocco, has a right to independence. Both the people and the state have a right to be independent." But what type of independence? It's called what? External sovereign independence. So the Moors, according to the Act of Asers of 1906, the Act of Asers recognizes who has the sovereign authority. That was what? The Empire Morocco as the state. They got the head of state, the Sultan, then the Sultan commissioned the Moors government to regain its power as the government, i.e. the Moths. So ever since 1906, we as Moors have always had a right to govern the great enterprise commonly known as the Empire Morocco. But unfortunately, we didn't understand what self-determination is all about. Unfortunately, we don't understand the eight parts of speech when it comes to words, how we were self-identifying. We have to understand as Moors, we gotta use a little bit of humility, because some of the things that's happened to us over the decades is self-imposed. We was running around saying we's Moors Americans. The colonists never called us Moors Americans, and that doesn't mean they wasn't a part of the COINTELPRO. But guess who came out here and told us we was Moors Americans? We did, our own people, looking in the mirror that looked just like us. We told ourselves we was Moors Americans. We continue to tell ourselves we're everything but Moroccans. So yes, the colonists got something to do with COINTELPRO? Absolutely. You already know that the sellout is real, because the 1906 Act of Asers put Moroccans back in charge, and three years later, here comes the NAACP of the year 1909 to tell the Moors they're colored. Right then and there, you can see the great sellout was happening, right then and there. So we've been dealing with this for decades, but the time is up. All the procrastination is over. We're going to move forward, and we're gonna uplift fallen humanity in a very competent way. As Moors should go back and read Resolution 1514 of 1960 that the United Nations wrote, and they use a word in there called "rapidly." Rapidly is the word that's written in that United Nations' resolution. What does rapidly mean? Fast, immediately. That was written in 1960, and we're still sitting here procrastinating as Moors. Since 1960. 65 years later, since 1960, we're still sitting here buffering. We gotta have some humility and understand that we've delayed our own justice. Yes, the colonists are 50% of the problem, but we're the other half. And that's the part that's never been told, what is the other half? That the other half is, we as Moors have delayed our own justice, but we don't wanna admit that. We don't wanna admit the truth that Moors America is an adjective. We don't wanna admit that. We don't wanna admit that a maxim is a made-up word. We don't want to admit that. We don't wanna admit that we never read the Charter, even though it's been out since 1945, and Barack H. Obama tried to get you to go back and read it in 2010. You don't wanna admit that you did not read it. This is what we have to do. We gotta look in the mirror at self. Know what Dr. Ali said, what? Study, 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 and what? If you ask me what to study next, I would say, "Go study yourself," because clearly you still don't comprehend that you're Moroccan, and all you gotta do is enforce Moroccan law. By doing what? Learning from the Europeans, and what are Europeans been doing? Enacting international law. They've been enacting constitutions. They've been checking the boxes regarding what? What's called procedural law. Europeans are excellent at establishing boxes, right? On a uniform basis. They're good at procedural law. And their procedural law is based upon what? Substantial law. So they got law, then they create procedures, that way they can check boxes. We as Moors, we didn't, we never understood the procedure of law. Because we wasn't even reading the treaties. We didn't read the Charter. We didn't read the United Nations' resolutions. We didn't read France versus United States of America. So how are we gonna understand law and the procedure if we didn't even know about the We've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray, and we need to admit that, that people with fezzes and turbos on and bow ties have led us astray. We gotta say that's what we, our people, did to ourselves. And now look what we're trying to do, run over here and be Indians now and say, "'Cause you see, the Indians got some structure.'" See, Indians got substantive law, and they got procedural laws in place, they got some structure, they getting a little bit of benefit. So instead of Moors uprising and establish their own government, you wanna run to be Indian now, 'cause the Indians already got their government set up. Shame on y'all. How about you just understand that we already have a state? It's called the Empire Morocco. All we need to do is put the government back together like Humpty Dumpty. That's all we have to do. But what's the problem? It's leadership. It's always leadership. Everything starts at the top, and it trickles down. We've delayed our own justice, but that time is over, alright? Okay, let's get into the class. As the Moors know, always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount, right? This is the first step towards rising up the Empire Morocco. It started with Udi Passeidais' juris. Where's that? Each one of the little territories such as Colorado, state of Colorado was a Udi Passeidais' territory, that was being overseen by who? An administrative authority, a colonial administrative power, commonly known as the State of Colorado. And Colorado is in a position where they're superior to who? The United States federal corporation. And the United States federal corporation has to appoint themselves to who? Who they have to report to? The United States of America. So therefore, Udi Passeidais' juris is about your Constitution taking over the defined territory, that where you're reclaiming and restoring the land, the territory, for who? The people. When we read Article 55 of the Charter, it talks about self-determination, it's about the creation of conditions of the nation and then the people. It's about the creation of a nation, creating the condition for the nation and the people. What's nation? State. So the state and people come together as one. We didn't understand this, because we wasn't reading the Charter. Alright, let's take it to the board. Alright, so in Class 135 and Class 136, we'll basically go over the same information, alright? So what are we talking about? The Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 9. I know in Class 135, I kept saying, "Chapter 4," but it's really Chapter 9, okay? So Chapter 9, Articles 55 through 60, was about what? International economic and social cooperation, right? But it's also about what? Chapter 11, Articles 73 through 74, it's about a declaration regarding non-self-governing territories, okay? So between Chapter 11 and Chapter 9, what we're learning is, is when you declare your independence, now you're seeking what? Now you wanna self-govern, right? 'Cause at first you were non-self-governing, once you declare, you're taking steps towards self-government, right? You wanna self-govern what? The territory. What's the territory called now? A state. You're establishing new conditions to establish, to create, a Udi Passeidais' territory that would be called now what? A state. That's the umbrella word. State, right? So because of this, because of Chapter 11, it now sets up Chapter 9, where now you're starting to introduce reforms, that way you start establishing your economics, which is taxation, right? 'Cause that's what we've been talking about lately, right? Taxation. Moors wanna talk about taxes. Taxes about economics. That helps what? The social reforms, right? But we're gonna need some cooperation from the United Nations, because we're dealing with a belligerent colonial occupier called the United States of America. We'll talk about that more today. What is the mindset of the United States of America? The United States, the several Union States, their governors, Attorney General, Secretary of State, all the mayors, the police, the sheriff, right? The state troopers, their prosecutors, their magistrates. What is their mindset right now? 'Cause trust me, word's gotten out to all of them about the fact that Moors are starting to make a competent, proper claim to decolonize, and we're utilizing international law as our legal defense. We're utilizing our own Moors treaties as our legal defense. We're utilizing Coastal Court as our legal defense. So they know we're checking the proper boxes coming on, what? Procedural law. That's the procedure, but it's based on what? The substantive law. So we're checking boxes based upon substantive law. So now we're finally following the procedural law, which is checking boxes. These boxes of international law, right? So then, we talked about what? Chapter 14, Articles 92 through 96, about what? The International Court of Justice, and right now, we've been taking a look at a case from the ICJ called what? France versus United States of America of 1952, right? And right now, we've been talking about some Moroccan treaties and Moroccan taxes, right? So last couple of classes, we went over the overview, to start talking about, okay, what was their case all about? Well, one of the issues, one of the legal arguments that the United States of America said, "Well, we don't have to pay taxes unless the taxes are based in the language of the treaty." But the ICJ told the United States of America, which we will go over eventually, we'll read the actual judgment, not just keep giving the Moors the overview, right? The United States of America knows they have to pay taxes, but they're trying to narrow it down and say, "Only specific taxes." Would the ICJ have to tell them, "No, that's not true. The Moors have a right to create new revenue, i.e. new taxes, new custom duties," which is taxes, "for the state." There's nothing you can do about it, the United States of America, right? But at the same time, the United States of America said, "Well, is Moroccan law even binding on Americans?" And ICJ had to tell them, "Yes, you signed the treaties, remember? So stop throwing stuff up against the wall to see what sticks." The answer is yes, 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 and yes. You got another question? 'Cause the answer's gonna be yes. It's binding. And that's what the ICJ basically told the United States of America in 1952. Obviously, we'll keep reading the judgment, we'll learn more, right? So we're learning that Moroccan taxes are binding on foreigners, right? But what about taxes? Moroccan taxes creates economics and social development for Moors. Keep in mind, Moors is an abbreviation for Moroccans, right? So we keep going over this. Today, like I said, we'll talk about the mentality of the United States, as we start to go through our varying stages of advancement, right? To get into statehood, 'cause we creating our conditions, right? What potentially might be one of the pushbacks that the United States starts to give the Moors? Right? 'Cause you gotta remember now, the United States has been in cruise control. Why has the United States been in cruise control? It's because they got the Moors that call themselves Americans. Even though the United States of America and the United States, and the several Union States, even though they naturalized the Moors, but it's a whole lot easier for the colonial power if in fact the natives of the land are also calling themselves Americans. It makes it easier, the United States, to hold power over colonized people if said colonized people are calling themselves the same status and nationality of the colonizers themselves. So you have to understand, the United States has been able to hold on to rulership because we act, we asked to start calling ourselves Americans. That made it a lot easier on the United States, and the Moors don't even realize, when you say you're Moors American, you're making it easier on the United States. You say you're Native American, or you're African-American, you're making it easier on the United States, 'cause you're not using the qualified word, right? The well-settled principal word is what? Moroccan. That's firm, right? That's absolute. That's mentioned in the treaties. And when you don't mention those words, all you're doing is giving the United States more time to stall, deny, and defend what they perceive as their rights, and we'll talk about that today. Alright, let's get into the class. So like I said, you know, we've been going over the Charter, because that's what Barack H. Obama wanted us to do since 2010. Obviously, this is the obligation of many Moors for establishing states. You have an obligation to read the Charter, because all the Moroccan states had to become parties to the Charter. We have to recognize it, right? Accept the terms and conditions of all 111 of its arms. So that means you have to actually read it and comprehend it and put it to full force and effect. You have no choice. This is why the Moors wasn't reading the Charter, because the Moors wasn't even trying to establish states. Why didn't they read the Charter? Charter's all about states, but the Moors kept saying, "We don't need no stinking state." Yeah, that's why you're still in the state of condition that you're in, kicking and screaming, talking about these white folks and these Europeans is wrong. No, we've been wrong. We've been derelict in our own duties. We had a lack of due diligence to look this information up. Alright, so this is the Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 14, about the International Court of Justice, Article 92. Keep it in mind that the ICJ is the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, alright? But our Class 135, we started going over what? Chapter 9. And what was Chapter 9 all about? Okay? So Chapter 9... Good brother Joseph, from the top.
Chapter 9, International Economic and Social Cooperation. Article 55. With a view to the creation of conditions of stability and well-being which are necessary for the peaceful and friendly relations among nations based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, the United Nations shall promote.
Alright, thank you very much. So in their opening, Article 55 is about international economic and social cooperation, right? This is an international reform, it's an international obligation. It's an international responsibility for all states, right? To work with people who are doing what? Declaring their independence, right? And once they declare their independence, now they enact the Constitution, they ratify the positive promulgated with the United Nations in according to Article 1 or 2 of the Charter. They put together their branches of government, three branches of government, they start to do what? Soil of a shirley, they start to do a self-govern. However, you already know, new states, right? Especially under Udi Passeidais' juris, even the Empire Morocco right now is void of a de jour central government. So even though the Empire Morocco has existed since time immemorial, it's still void of government, so even the Empire Morocco's gonna need what? Some cooperation to lift itself up. It's like coming out of a coma. You can't just get up and start running. You gotta stumble a little bit and get your bearings, right? So that's why the word "cooperation" is in there. So the administrative state, or the administrative power, administrative authority, the colonial powers such as the United States of America, the United States and the several Union States have an obligation to help the Moors in cooperation, to help the Moors to be at varying stages of advancement, to rise up. It's an obligation of the United States of America. It's not a "I think I'll do it," or "Maybe I'll do it." No, it's a responsibility, and this is why Rahm Emanuel trying to tell the Moors, "Your rights are guaranteed in the Charter." Why is that? Because the United States of America signed this contract. This is a treaty. The Charter is a treaty amongst states. You see how many treaties the United States of America has signed, obligating themselves to assist the Moors? They've signed all the treaties of peace and friendship, 1787, 1836. They signed the Madrid Convention of 1880. They signed the Treaty of the Act of Asers of 1906. They're the ones who were the first negotiating states to put together the Charter of the United Nations in 1944, fully ratified in 1945 and put into full force and effect. They were there at the time this Charter was being drafted, so therefore, they know all about Articles 1, 55, and 73, the obligations. The United States of America was there at day one. That's another treaty they signed that recognized the rights of the Moors to decolonize under self-determination of peoples and self-determination of territories. So you have to understand, the United States of America has bound themselves in all these contracts, and all the Moors have to do is enforce them in a competent way. We'll talk about that some more today. So in Article 55, they start talking about what? Very important, listen. Look at the sequential order of Article 55 of the Charter. It's about the creation of conditions. What conditions? It's about setting up what? Peaceful and friendly relations among nations, plural, that several states coming together, including the new state, is trying to rise up. So it's about a state among nations, that means among states, and then it says next, what? "Based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples." You see that? Now listen. This is sequential order. Right here, among nations, so among states, then the next word they use what? Their self-determination of people. So it's self-determination of the state, which is the territory, the land, then it's self-determination of the peoples itself. But it's generic language. Among nations, isn't that a generic word? It says specific state. Right here, peoples, isn't that a generic word? It says a specific nationality. So therefore, the Charter's written in generic words. After that, it's your job as a people to self-determine what is the name of the state, i.e. the land or territory, and what's the nationality of the people you plug and play. Now you can enforce it. You see? Listen. Article 55 was reaffirmed by what? Resolution 1514 of 1960. The decolonization resolution. Look at the sequential order in the title. Listen. "It's a declaration on the granting of independence to colonial countries and peoples." You see sequential order of Article 55? What do we catch? So it's independence of what? Among colonial countries, what is that? Among nations. See, among states, right there. And it says "of people," so it's self-determination of the state and self-determination of peoples' independence. So the state becomes independent, and the people become independent on self-determination. So we go back to Article 55. Article 55 said what? The state, then it said what? The people. So about self-determination of the state, self-determination of the people. Go back to Resolution 1514. It's self-determination of the state, there's self-determination of the people. You see that? You gotta see what's happening. This is all Barack H. Obama wanted us to do, is go back and read and understand where your rights are guaranteed, where you can get what? Some cooperation, some assistance while you're doing what? Decolonizing. We're going to need some help, Moors. We can't do this by ourselves. Yes, the onus is on us, right? What do they always say? "I help you when I see you helping yourself." So if you ain't trying to help yourself, then why should I try to help you? This is what the United Nations, looking at these Moors, saying, "These Moors ain't helping themselves." But now that we're checking the right boxes based upon procedural law, because we're enforcing a substantial law, based on being Moroccans of Morocco, now the United Nations sees that we're helping ourselves, now they can come in and help us too, because now they gotta do what? Look, go back to the Charter. Article 55, it's gotta be what? Some cooperation, right? It's gotta be cooperation, Article 55. This is all Barack H. Obama wanted us to do, is read the Charter. Okay, listen. What are we supposed to be establishing? We're supposed to be reactivating, revising, restoring, right? Under post-laminium, the Empire Morocco again. It has always existed, it's just been dormant. It hasn't had a central government since 1956. The lane's been wide open for the Moors to put together the three branches of government of the Empire Morocco since 1956. So we're supposed to establish the Empire Morocco to get it resuscitated, right? 'Cause it already exists. Someone just needs to sit in the seats through what? Voting, i.e. platter sites, referendums, to vote for the officials that will sit in the seats. And then establish what? An executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch, right? And who oversees those branches? Where you got the Prime Minister, right? You got a Speaker of the House for the legislative branch, and then you got the judicial branch, Chief Judge. And underneath the executive branch, you got the Prime Minister, you got the Wazir Council, that's all the heads of state sitting at this one round table. The legislative branch, you got the Speaker of the House, you got the Saharaha Council, that's all the matriarchs sitting there as legislators. Then you got the judicial branch, you got the Chief Judge overseeing all other associate judges. That's the Empire Morocco's government. But underneath the Empire Morocco's government's what? i.e. the Moths. So the Empire Morocco has a Moth, and that's the Moths right there. Executive branch, that's your Moths. Executive branch, that's your Mozzin. Legislative branch is part of the Mozzin. And judicial branch is a part of the Mozzin, that's the government. That's the administration, right? Underneath that is what? Okay, now here's what? All the several more states under Udi Passegev's juris. Versus ANPAC. We took over what? A latitude longitude, right? That's an Udi Passegev's jurisdiction coming on as ANPAC acronym. So all the Moors have to take over territories such as Utah, right? New Mexico, et cetera. These are territories that have to take over. And that will fall into this bracket right here. All of our independent states right now would become interdependent states, internal states under the umbrella of the Empire of Morocco. Under that umbrella, that state, right? So we come under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco. The Empire Morocco grants sovereignty to each of the territories. So each territory coming on is like ANPAC as an example, is granted certain powers from the Empire Morocco for it to operate and govern over the territory. But also the United States of America, right? The United States of America, the United States and the several Union States also come under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco. Because the Empire Morocco is the original state, the empire state, the parent state, the external state that has jurisdiction in all disputes. The United States of America and Moroccan laws go hand in hand because Moroccan laws govern over the United States of America. You must understand this. Moroccan laws govern over the United States of America. Moroccan laws govern over the United States Federal Corporation. And Moroccan laws govern over all of their several charters, commonly known as the several Charter Union States. Why is it Moroccan law governs over them? Because they're geographically located where? In Morocco, Empire Morocco, you see? Alright? So that's what the Moors have to understand. We're putting the government back together because that was the obligation of the Act Al-Sares of nineteen oh six. We're way behind schedule. We're over one hundred years behind schedule. So the Moors know, uh, I've been given some, some brief understandings about Moroccan laws, right? Moroccan laws and Moroccan taxes. The Moors are ready to learn about Moroccan taxes because this right here is the case of what? This, this right here on the screen is what? France versus United States of America, year nineteen fifty-two, right? So right here, we're on page what? Two oh three of the judgment, okay? So we scroll down. And so far, we're pretty much stuck at the first paragraph about Moroccan taxes. Moors want to know, "How can we tax the United States?" I got no problem with that. We'll talk about it. It's easy to talk about because the case came out in nineteen fifty-two. So all I gotta do is just talk about it, right? Narrate it, but guess what? Who gets to tax the people? Only Moroccans can collect Moroccan taxes. So we gotta keep talking about, okay, who gets the tax? Who gets the taxes? The first party in law is who? Empire Morocco. That's the first person in international law that gets to collect the taxes, the Empire Morocco itself, right? Let's go back to it. So Empire Morocco is the state on the contract that has a right to collect the taxes, right? But then the Empire Morocco, it is sitting so to whose head state puts together a Mozzin, the government, and the government puts together reforms, right? I.e. laws and regulations that set up what? The procedure, right? On how to collect the tax. And then the Empire Morocco then turns around, because all politics is local, the Empire Morocco then allows each territory, such as ANPAC's territory as an example, the Empire Morocco grants powers to ANPAC to collect taxes locally from the state of Colorado, right? And anyone else performing any type of works, right? Any type of commercial enterprise within the jurisdiction of ANPAC, everyone within, residing within the territory has to pay tax. And when those taxes are collected, they flow back up to where? The Empire Morocco. So ANPAC will keep a percentage of taxes and the percentage will flow back up to the state, Empire Morocco, just like the United States. You got the state of Colorado who has, who collects taxes, then they float money back up to who? The United States, federal government. There's all kind of taxes going on. You got federal taxes coming out your employee check, right? So they taking federal taxes out your check, state taxes out your check. You can go to the store, you buy something, it's tax, 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 tax. And the feds is getting a percentage, and state of Colorado is getting a percentage. And all this stuff is just flowing back up to the parent, right? So what happened is, the Empire Morocco would turn around and collect taxes from who else? The United States of America, see? So when they collect all their taxes, they owe percentages that go back up where? Back up to the Empire Morocco. So their percentage will flow to the Moroccan states, right? So a percentage will flow to Moroccan states over here to your left, and a percentage will flow back up to the Empire Morocco because that is the state, you see? And we're talking about this law in the future. I'm just trying to let the Moors know what's, what's up and coming. Why? Because the taxes help us deal with what? Economics that takes care of the social reforms of the people and the state. We're talking taxes. What's the purpose of collecting taxes? Well, you gotta take care of the state and the people. It's about reforms of the well-being and the welfare of the people. That's what it's all about. We'll learn about this in the future, just trying to give the Moors a snapshot, right? It's all about the state. Okay? So like I said, it's about Moroccan taxes, that's the judgment, okay? So a, as a refresher, let, let's, let's work it backwards, right? Let's read the summary to remind the Moors, we have a right to collect taxes. But who's collecting taxes? The state. But who's collecting taxes on behalf of the state? The Moors government. So the Empire Morocco gets to collect tax. Who works on behalf of Empire Morocco? The Mozzin, i.e. the Moors government, you see? So we're gonna collect taxes, okay? We're talking about the fact, yes, the United States of America owes the Moors taxes, right? But we gotta get back to the origin. How do we take the step to the procedural law to get to that point? What's the procedure? What laws do we use? You see? And what is the mindset of the United States of America while we're trying to enforce said laws, treaties, and regulations? We gotta understand their mindset, okay? As well as the Moors mindset. Alright, so this is the summary. We're going to read, uh, sections six and seven again, right? Just to remind ourselves, alright? Uh, good brother Dre, from the top.
Case concerning rights of nationals, uh, of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. Judgment of twenty-seven August nineteen fifty-two. Number six, by six votes to five, no treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens, nor can such an immunity compensatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals.
Alright, so this, this is the summary. The ICJ has now ruled and saying, "The United States of America owes taxes." They're not immune from taxes, right? So this one right here is section six, uh, by six votes to five. It says, "Judges said of the ICJ, said, 'No treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens, nor can such an immunity compensatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals.'" So not only is the United States of America, right? Obligated to pay taxes, but then the ICJ asked his last sentence and says, "The other European states are not immune either, such as Canada, right? Great Britain." Where else? Where's the other European states? Right? You got what? Portugal, Spain, France, Denmark, right? Germany, Austria, Hungary, Italy, Sweden, you name it. Denmark, Netherlands, they already know this. They were just hoping the Moors didn't find out. But they've always known this. It's not, nothing new. It's just new to who? Moroccans. Okay, section seven.
Number seven, by seven votes to four, as to the consumption taxes imposed by the Daher of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight, these are payable on all goods. Whether imported into Morocco or produced there, they are not, therefore, customs duties, the maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve and a half percent by the signatory powers of the Act Al-Sares. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others.
Alright, so from the top, section seven. And we're working it backwards, we're talking about, okay, here's the end result. And now we gotta go back to the origin, talking about, okay, what laws do we enforce? Substantive laws. And what's the procedural law? The procedure, how we start checking boxes to get to the point to collect said, said taxes, you see? Okay, so section seven. By seven votes to four, as to the consumption taxes, talking taxes, imposed by the Daher of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight, these are payable on all goods, whether imported into Morocco or produced there. They are not, therefore, custom duties. The maximum rate for which was fixed at twelve and a half percent by the signatory powers of the Act Al-Sares. So all Europeans set that fixed rate of twelve and a half percent, right? Regarding some taxes. Continuing the reading. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any other states. So the United States of America is obligated to pay taxes to who? The Empire Morocco. But who collects the taxes on behalf of the Empire Morocco? That would be the Moors government, i.e. the Mozzin, you see? So as you can see, the United States of America is obligated to pay taxes, even ICJ reaffirmed, even though the treaty's already said this. But what was the United States trying to say? Well, Moroccan laws are not binding against Americans because all the Moors have acquiesced. They've been subjugated. They call themselves Americans. Why we have to pay Moroccan taxes and the Moors are saying they're Americans? You see? And this is why Moors have to stop calling themselves Americans. You've been adopted. We learned that in class one thirty-five, right? The Bancroft Treaties, right? Talked about the fact the Moors have been adopted. They have been naturalized. Naturalized means adopted. And that's what Moors have to understand. Soon you start referring yourselves Moroccan and you consent back to a Moroccan state, become an officer of your state, you can start to help to collect the taxes. Listen. What's the problem? We gotta talk problem solutions. Okay, Moors want to talk about taxes, but we also have to talk about latches. Moors want to talk about taxes, then we also have to talk about latches. Because the latches is gonna expose some things about the Moors and latch is gonna expose some things about the Americans. Alright, so it's taxes versus latches, alright? So, now we're from the top.
Latches. In common law legal systems, latches is a lack of diligence and activity in making a legal claim or moving forward with legal enforcement of a right, particularly in regard to equity.
Alright, so latches, right? Is in common law legal systems. Latches is a lack of due diligence, right? A lack of diligence, i.e. a lack of due diligence and activity in making a legal claim or moving forward with legal enforcement of a right, particularly in regard to equity. Alright, let's read one more. Latches, we're talking latches, Nova.
Latches, a noun. Law. Unreasonable delay in making an assertion or claim.
Assertion.
Assertion or claim such as asserting a right, claiming a privilege, or making an application for redress which may result in refusal.
Okay, so from the top, latches, is a noun. You see that word right next to it? Law. See that? So latches, so noun, but they're now talking law. Okay, listen, I'll explain everything. Thank you for your patience. Alright. So what is latches? It's an unreasonable delay in making assertion or claim such as asserting a right, claiming privilege, or making an application for redress which may result in refusal. What is latches? Okay, let me get a Moors quick briefing. Latches is one of the things that the United States may try to invoke because the Moors are now making claims, they want, Moors want their rights, Moors want their taxes. So the United States is grandmasters at what? Stall, deny, and defend. They just throw anything at the wall to try to slow it down. So I gotta expose to the Moors this thing called latches. Now, Tashri Bay talked about this word years ago, but he never really broke it down the way the Moors should have understood it. Please understand the word latches is a mirror up against your face. Latches will expose the fact the Moors have been derelict in our own duty. We've been negligent in enforcing our own rights to make a proper claim in a timely manner. So you as a plaintiff, i.e. a claimant, you're making a claim. So the United States is saying, "Well, let's try to use latches to slow these Moors down." Meaning, latches is similar, it's not equivalent, but similar to what? Statue of Limitation. So latches is similar, not equivalent, it's not the same, but it's similar because the United States of America would try to use this to try to slow the Moors down and say, "Isn't there a statute of limitation up where they can make some claims?" And the answer is what? No. But that ain't gonna stop them from trying to hold things up with this frivolous legal argument. Just trying to prepare the Moors to understand what speed bumps the United States might potentially throw out there. Saying, "What are the Moors been waiting so long to make claims? Do we really have to do all this stuff they're asking for?"
Yes.
And the answer is, yes. The ICJ already told them in nineteen fifty-two. But we have to talk about it because I gotta prepare the Moors to understand the mindset of a colonist who already knows they can't hold on to it, but they wanna see if you're gonna give up first, right? Do you have the wherewithal to keep up the good fight, right? So this is what you call latches, but keep in mind, latches is similar to statute of limitation. The United States may try to use a legal argument, say, "These Moors waited too long. They shouldn't have a right to get a hundred percent of their rights back. So can we negotiate something in the middle? Can they get fifty percent of what they asking for? Is that a hundred percent?" And the answer is what?
No.
No. But they'll stall it out. So I'm trying to let the Moors know, we gotta get in the mindset of the colonists, and I need to let the Moors know what has been the mindset of the Moors who've been negligent in our own due diligence. So this is about a two-party word. Latches is the plaintiff, i.e. the claimant, which the Moors was trying to make a claim. And the United States of America's acting like the defendant said, "They ran out of time." Latches is about both parties, okay? So we're gonna learn about that. Okay, from the top again, Nova, latches.
Latches is a noun in law. Unreasonable delay in making an assertion or claim such as asserting a right, claiming privilege, or making an application for redress which may result in refusal.
So latches sometimes can result in refusal. So the United States is like, "Let's just throw something against the wall, see if maybe we might win." They already know they're gonna lose. They wanna see if the Moors can make a proper claim, right? So that's what you gotta understand. It's about stall, deny, and defend. That's the mindset of a colonist, okay? Listen, Nova.
What is a latches defense? Latches is an equitable defense or doctrine. A defendant who invokes the doctrine is asserting that the claimant has delayed in asserting its rights and because of this delay is no longer entitled to bring an equitable claim.
You see that? This is how the United States may approach this. I'm not saying they will. But we need to prepare ourselves mentally to understand the colonist's mentality or how they're gonna try to stall, deny, and defend the indefensible. Because they already know, the ICJ already told them, "Yeah, you gotta pay up." So the United States might pretend to come back and say, "Well, isn't that time up? I mean, dang, I mean, we got a hundred and fifty years later, they just not coming around and saying, 'What we owe them? Isn't that gonna disrupt the United States of America and all the, this, this worldwide connection they got on planet Earth? It's gonna mess up our politics.'" That's what the United States of America was gonna say. And the ICJ's already told them, "It doesn't matter." Doesn't mean the United States is not gonna... Doesn't mean the United States is not gonna try to stall, deny, and defend by creating some legal argument that tries to hold the Moors up. So I'm preparing the Moors, what am I trying to say? Don't expect decolonization to happen overnight. We gotta prepare for the good legal arguments, but I'm getting your mind right to understand how we're gonna beat them even at this legal argument of latches. But keep in mind, latches is about the Moors too and their negligence. Moors are so sensitive, they don't wanna hear about the fact they dropped the ball, they don't like that. But we're gonna tell the truth, because the truth gonna set us free. Okay, okay, we're going to read a little bit more about latches, okay? Let's get a basic understanding of what latches is, okay? This is important for the Moors. Even if we never have to use it, let's just read, okay? Okay, Nova, from the top.
Latches, latches is an equitable defense or doctrine. A defendant who invokes the doctrine is asserting that the claimant has delayed in asserting its rights. And because of this delay, is no longer entitled to bring an equitable claim. Failure to assert one's right in a timely manner can result in claims being barred by latches. It is a maxim of equity that, quote, equity aids the vigilant, not the negligent, end of quote. However, delays alone is not enough to prevent a claimant obtaining relief. The consequence of the delay may be that it would be unfair for the court to give relief. Usually because the defendant has changed its position because of the delay. The party asserting latches has the burden of proving that it is applicable. Latches is distinguishable from the statute of limitation. Which prevents a party from asserting claims after the designated limitations period has expired.
Okay, so then, let's take it from the top, okay? Latches is an equitable defense. So the United States of America may use as a defense, latches theory. Theory. Right, I mean, it's not based in law, but it's something they can throw up against the wall, right? So latches is an equitable defense or doctrine. A defendant who invokes the doctrine is asserting that the claimant, the Moors, have delayed in asserting its rights. The Moors have been waiting too long. And because of this delay, is no longer entitled to bring an equitable claim. Failure to assert one's right in a timely manner can result in claims being barred by latches. It is a maximum equity that equity aids the vigilant, not the negligent. You see, so the United States may say, these Moors have been negligent, they've been running around calling themselves Americans. They run around calling themselves Baptist, African American, black, negro, color, Hebrew, Israelite, Indian. That's negligence. They're trying to say the Moors would be in a status of gross negligence or ordinary negligence that caused our own injustice. So therefore, we waived our right because we didn't make a claim in a timely manner. Now, spoiler alert, like I said. The I C J has already said, these Moors, soon as they stop acquiescing, they get all their rights back, one hundred percent. The treaties express the Moors get their rights back, one hundred percent. Because treaties are what? Perpetual. The only time a treaty ends is when two parties agree to terminate it. The United States still got their names on the treaty, so the treaties are perpetual. And then the Charter of the United Nations, Article one fifty five and seventy three, also set forth the right. For the Moors to decolonize and come into what? Their own independence. As a state. So you understand latches, especially the last sentence says what? The party asserting latches, the United States of America. Has the burden of proving that it is applicable. Latches is distinguishable from statute of limitations, see that? So statute of limitation is not the same as latches. You know why statute of limitations is something that's enforceable? Because it's a statute. It says, this statute says you got seven years to do this or ten years to do that. Well, there is no statute of limitation when it comes to treaties, because treaties are perpetual. The Charter's provisions are perpetual. Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty of the United Nations is perpetual. You understand? And the Empire Morocco itself as a state is what? Perpetual. Our Moroccan nationality is perpetual, because as long as we're still here, then we're still here. Nothing they can do about it, it's perpetual. So latches can't be used as a law that the United States can stand on. Could they stand on statute of limitation? Yeah, but that don't exist when it comes to statehood. So I'm just trying to prepare the Moors to the mindset of a colonist that'll throw anything up against the wall to try to slow it down. They don't like nationalist movements. They don't like constitutionalist movements. Especially since the Moors get to control the temple. What's different about the Moors versus all other people that's been colonized? The Moors have treaties already. The Moors aren't just exclusively stuck with the Charter and the United Nations Resolution. We have treaties that already expressed the language in nineteen oh six, that we are the sovereign independent state. And that we are the sovereign authority with the Moors government. And that we get to invoke Moroccan laws and regulations and collect taxes. The United States of America already signed the contract nineteen oh six. So there is no question. The question's already been answered since nineteen oh six. So who's been negligent in making a proper claim all this time? Us, as Moors. We've been negligent. We've been derelict in our own duties. That must be understood. In the summary, we're talking the United States mentality as a colonist. In section five, right, of the summary, right, we read the summary. In section five, the I C J used this word called ill-founded. That's a very choice word they used in the summary to describe the belligerence. And the mentality, the psychology of the colonists commonly known as the United States of America. Right? What is ill-founded? Why did the I C J tell the United States, okay? In this sentence right here, it said what? The contention of the United States is ill-founded if they think Moroccan laws and constant court is not binding against them. If they think taxes is not binding against them, then their mentality is ill-founded. Why did the I C J use that language? Okay, first of all, let's look it up, right? What does ill-founded mean? Okay. Brother Joseph?
Ill-founded means an appeal or application which the person or body considering the matter determines is patiently, patently frivolous. Or vivacious, or entirely unarguable, or without merit, or otherwise constitutes an abuse of process.
So, the I C J has already told the United States of America in nineteen fifty two. They said, your mentality is ill-founded. Ill-founded, say, the United States of America is ill, they're sick. Sick. Listen. Ill-founded means an appeal or application which the person or body considering the matter determines is patently frivolous. So everything the United States of America is patently frivolous, this is what the I C J is telling the United States of America. Everything you said about the fact Moroccan laws and taxes and regulations not binding against you is what? Patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. That's your belief, United States. Your belief is in your head, but it cannot be what? Substantive, they can't prove it that they got these rights. So the I C J already told them they're ill-founded, let's read it from the top again. Ill-founded means an appeal or application which the person or body considering the matter determines is patently frivolous. Or vexatious, or entirely unarguable, or without merit, or otherwise constitutes an abuse of process. So the I C J told the United States, all your legal arguments are what? Unarguable. The I C J told them it's without merit. The I C J already told them it's otherwise constitutes an abuse of process. They already told the United States of America in nineteen fifty two, it's an abuse of your process. If in fact, you try to supervise the impossibility of performance of Moroccan law and Moroccan taxes. Constant court reigns supreme. And the United States of America owes taxes. And the I C J has already warned them in nineteen fifty two that you're sick in your head. If you think that these Moroccan laws and treaties and the Charter of the United Nations is not binding against you. And therefore, anything you do that's contrary to international law. And contrary to the Moors treaties. And contrary to the Moors Moroccan laws or contrary to the Moors regulations, is gonna be considered abuse of process. An abuse is against the law. Right? Keep in mind, we'll come back to this, listen, going back to the Charter. What did we learn in the Charter? Okay. Now, let me go back to what? Article eleven, right? What did we learn in Article eleven? Okay, listen. Chapter eleven, I should say, chapter eleven. From the top, we're gonna look for the word what? Abuse. Right? From the drake, from the top.
Chapter eleven, Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Defending Territories, Article seventy three. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories. Whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government. Recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount. And accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost. Within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter. The well-being of the inhabitants of these territories and to this end. A, to ensure with due respect for the culture of the people's concern, their political, economic, social, and educational advancement. Their just treatment and their protection against abuses.
See that? Abuses. So the I C J already told the United States of America in nineteen fifty two, you better be careful. When these Moors rise up, they're gonna be like Bernie Mac and say, gonna be trouble, trouble, trouble. Because if you try to abuse these Moors, these Moors got protections that's guaranteed in the Charter. The United Nations gonna come down on the United States of America, the United States of America's already been warned in nineteen fifty two. Told them already, you're ill. You're ill-founded. That everything you said is patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. If you think Moroccan laws aren't binding on you. And so is all the other what? European states fall in the same category. So there can be no abuses. That's what Charter says, that's what Barack H. Obama was trying to get the Moors to go back and read. Which was what? Article seventy three regarding non-self-governing territories that have an administrator overseeing your land. But yet you can get rid of the administrator if you turn around and understand how to create a state for the inhabitants, i.e. the Moors. Right, because it's the sacred trust of your land, and all you had to do was self-govern. Self-govern! Moors haven't been doing it. You didn't put together a three-prince government. But we're doing it now, aren't we? Okay, listen, going back to ill-founded. Okay, so, from the top again, Nova.
Ill-founded means an appeal or application which the person or body considering the matter determines is patently frivolous. Or vexatious, or entirely unarguable, or without merit, or otherwise constitutes an abuse of process.
Alright, so keep in mind, why are we reading that? Just a moment. Why are we reading that? Because the International Court of Justice, in the summary of nineteen fifty two, already told the United States. Anything you say is contrary to international law and contrary to the Moors treaties. And anything in your mentality is what? Ill-founded. This is the I C J told me. Okay, going back to ill-founded. Okay, what's some other definitions? Okay. Okay, Nova.
Ill-founded definition, based on weak evidence, illogical reasoning, or the like.
Uh huh. So, the I C J told them in nineteen fifty two, told the United States of America, ill-founded definition based on a weak evidence. Illogical reasoning, or the like. This is how the I C J talked to them. Listen, okay, Nova.
Ill-founded also means something that is ill-founded is not based on or any proper proof of evidence. Suspicious, suspicion, or jealousy, however, ill-founded can poison a marriage.
Alright, so, ill-founded, it's the I C J told the United States of America in nineteen fifty two. If the United States of America thinks Moroccan laws and these Moors can't enforce their rights. This was ill-founded, means something that is ill-founded is not based on any proper proof or evidence. See, what the Moors gotta understand that France already did a good job of getting the United States to be exposed. That Moroccan laws are binding against the United States of America. See, France put the Moors on the fifty-yard line. Right now, in the twenty-first century, the Moors are already on the fifty-yard line to decolonize. Because France and the United States are arrogant, both of them so arrogant. They went to the I C J to argue over Moors treaties and it got exposed. And I'm sure all the European states was upset with France. And I'm sure all the European states was upset with the United States of America as well. Because this came out, the Illuminati secret came out. It put the Moors on the fifty-yard line, all we gotta do is invoke this raison d'acquise. This well-settled principle. The I C J has already told the United States of America, when these Moors stop acquiescing, what does acquiesce mean? Stop calling yourself American. Stop calling yourself black. Stop calling yourself Indian, and the like. And start to understand your rights are derived through the Empire Morocco as these states, as Moroccans. Then you start to enforce your rights. Until then, the United States gets to continue to what? Abuse you. And who is it the United States cannot abuse? Moroccans and the Empire Morocco as the territory. So you got the independence of what? The territories, the Empire Morocco, the state, and the people, independence as Moroccans. The United States can't do nothing to abuse our rights. You see what's happening? Listen. Again, ill-founded.
Ill-founded interpretation of manifestly ill-founded. A decision on inadmissibility of an application constitutes an anticipated decision. That potential violations of human rights will be exposed.
So therefore, manifestly ill-founded, manifested. Right, already set forth from the aspect to full manifestation. What was the manifest? I C J ruling nineteen fifty two with the full manifestation in writing of a ruling. That said, the United States does to try to contradict, contravene, or supervise Moroccan law. Then it's ill-founded, manifested, ill-founded, meaning it's already been what? What has been already done? Prophecied, you see? It's already been set forth, it's manifested. Listen. Interpretation of manifestly ill-founded. As a decision on inadmissibility, what does inadmissibility mean? The United States can't even introduce that into the record and say, these Moors ain't got no rights, but guess what? You might not even be able to even enter that into the record, even say it, because it's already manifest, ill-founded in nineteen fifty two. It's already a well-settled principle, so you come up here with your latches? That's gonna get thrown out. That don't mean the United States ain't gonna try, I'm trying to let the Moors know about the mentality of the United States. Y'all must also understand the mentality of latches means the Moors have been negligent as well in our due diligence to make a proper claim in what? A timely manner. We've been procrastinating because our leaders been miseducating us. Keep in mind, your brother Abdullah Il-Talib Mosi Bay coming on his duly, said it what? August of twenty twenty-three, he said out loud on his little podcast, Moroccan Post Media, he said what? For twenty-five years, his growth and development was prohibited. For twenty-five years, and who was his teacher? Taj Tariq Bay. So Abdullah's knowledge was prohibited from growth to understand international law. That means everybody that Taj taught, their growth was prohibited as well. Everybody's been miseducated that learned from Taj, including myself. I got miseducated. I was in followership, I was never in worship, but I was in followership. Let me say this for the record, there would be no Jay Jermaine Bay without Taj Tariq Bay. I'll say that for the record, I've said it before. So I give credit where credit is due, I would've known about the Moors if it wasn't for Taj, so I give him credit. But at the same time, you must understand that Taj miseducated us. Yes, he told us we're Moors, yes, he told us we ain't black, but after that, what happened? They said enforce the Constitution, wrong answer. Said you're Moors Americans, wrong answer. You gotta understand what's happening, we didn't understand law. Okay, ill-founded.
Define ill-founded, uh, ill-founded synonyms, ill-founded pronunciation, ill-founded translation. English Dictionary definition of ill-founded adjective having no factual basis.
Having no factual basis, this was the ICJ saying. Continue.
Ill-founded in the Oxford Advanced American Dictionary. Check pronunciation of ill-founded definition of ill-founded adjective in Oxford Advanced Learner's Dictionary. Ill-founded from Logman Dictionary of Contemporary English, ill-founded adjective. Based on something that is untrue, his fears proved ill-founded.
See, untrue. Right? So, let's read this last one.
Your application may be manifestly ill-founded if you have failed to provide sufficient evidence to support the facts of the legal arguments which you raised.
See that? So the United States are trying to raise legal arguments such as that to say these Moors waited too long, but guess what? That's ill-founded. It might be inadmissible because it's ill-founded, it's ill, they're ill, right? They're sick in the head, what makes them sick in the head? When I say sick, that's not a negative. But what, what's happening? Okay, listen. It's called imperialism. Alright, so it's three words the Moors will have to understand, understand the mentality of a colonist. Alright, the first one is imperialism, alright, your brother, uh, Drake.
Imperialism. Imperialism is the practice, theory, or attitude of maintaining or extending power over foreign nations, particularly through expansionism, employing both hard power and soft power.
Alright.
Imperialism focuses.
Yep. So imperialism what? Listen to the words closely. Imperialism is the practice, theory, or attitude of maintaining or extending power over foreign nations, particularly through expansionism, employing both hard power and soft power. Did it ever mention law? No, it said what? It's a practice of theories, it's a practice of an attitude and arrogance of a colonist who can't stand on law to enforce their will. Everything they said is ill-founded, not based in law, cause you know what the law says? It's right here. It's all about Moroccan law, that's the law. So everything they're trying to stop the Moors based upon their what? Their theories and their aptitude. That's their mentality. It's imperialism. You see, listen, from the top, Nova.
Imperialism, it's a noun. A policy of extending a country's power and influence through diplomacy or military force.
Pause, read again.
A policy of extending a country's power and influence through diplomacy or military force.
Okay, so it's a policy, you see, not law. Policies made up on an ill-founded basis. Means it's not based in any evidence of law that they can do it. So it's a theory, it's a practice, that's an abuse of process. And it's against international law, it's contrary to international law. You gotta understand these definitions, and imperialism is a mindset. It's ill-founded. Listen, that's imperialism, it's another word, okay, listen, Nova.
Bigotry, it's a noun. One, obstinate or unreasonable attachment to a belief, opinion, or faction, in particular prejudice against a person or people on the basis of their membership of a particular group.
One more time.
One, obstinate or unreasonable attachment to a belief, opinion, or faction, in particular prejudice against a person or people on the basis of their membership of a particular group.
So a colonist is mad at the Moors because you got the audacity to be a Moor. So that's called bigotry when they're in their feelings, because they can't stop you, right? Listen, obstinate or unreasonable attachment to a belief. So the, so the colonists have an unreasonable attachment to a belief, that's why it's ill-founded. It's a belief, that's why the ICJ told them is what? Patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious that you think Moroccan laws aren't binding on you, the United States. They already told them this in nineteen fifty-two. So it's right here again. Bigotry, that's the mentality of a colonist, is about obstinate or unreasonable attachment to a belief. They believe since the Moors had acquiesced for so long, they could just hold on to the Moors' trust and resources and minerals, and that the American laws have jurisdiction over Moroccan laws. And the ICJ already told them in nineteen fifty-two, uh, yeah, that's ill-founded. That's not based in any evidence or any truth. Matter of fact, it might be what? Inadmissible if you even try to introduce it into the record, might just get thrown out. Your whole legal argument might get rejected. You see? So the whole sentence says obstinate or unreasonable attachment to a belief. So the United States been telling the Moors, everything you say is a belief, but guess what, the United States? Everything you say is belief as well, when the Moroccans start to make the proper claim. You see what's happening? Listen. So the colonists have an unreasonable attachment to a belief, an opinion, or faction, in particular prejudice against a person, against Moors, what type of Moors? Moroccans. Moors is a generic word for all types of Moors. You got Moors as what? Subjugated, as Moors subjects, that still naturalizes Americans, and you got Moors that's now what? Returned to Morocco as Moroccan, so Moore is a generic word. So the people against the persons or people on the basis of their membership of a particular group. So the Moors are members of a state, i.e. nationals of a Moroccan state. So imperialism and bigotry is a mentality that's ill-founded, but the United States will still try to use these theories, these practices to try to oppress the Moors to keep them from what? Being at varying stages of advancement to rise up to create conditions where the Moors get to a point where they start to collect taxes under the word economics. What's another word? It's three words, listen. What's another word? Hegemony. Okay, Nova.
Hegemony is a noun. Leadership or dominance especially by one country or social group other, over others.
Pause. So hegemony, right? Is leadership or dominance, especially by one country or social group over others. That's a hegemony mentality that they still think they're, they can maintain colonialism in Morocco. You see, through what? Dominance. But they know that's what? Ill-founded. So these three words, Moors have to study these three words, right? Imperialism, right? Bigotry. And hegemony, right? This is the mentality of a colonist. You must understand your opponent. He already knows he can't win, he already lost in nineteen fifty-two. So he'll try to use dominance and abuse of process, he'll try to abuse you to try to get you to give up, that's their whole game, to try to do what? To try to punk you into submission through their dominance, but they already know it's against the law. But unfortunately, guess what else happened under latches? The Moors were negligent. The Moors themselves call themselves every misnomer, right? In the book. We delayed our own justice that helped the police, helped the sheriffs, helped the state troopers, helped the FBI, and helped the prosecutors, and helped the judges, and helped the public defenders, and helped the governor, and helped the attorney general, and helped the secretary of state, and helped the United States and their secretary of state and attorney general, and helped the colonists in general hold on to our land and our wealth. All because we using the wrong name to identify ourselves. So we gotta take the time to have some humility and realize we played a part in our own subjugation. But at the same time, once you understand, okay, we made a mistake, let's correct it, let's move forward. Okay, now we gotta deal with the mentality of a colonist who already lost in nineteen fifty-two. They've been losing the whole time with all these treaties they've been signing, they, they continue to give away rights back to the Moors. Slowly but surely, they've been just giving rights back to the Moors that the Moors never knew. We were negligent in enforcing our own rights, this is what Moors gotta understand. What do I have up here? We're talking taxes. Moors want to talk about taxes. But first they had to talk about latches, because latches talks about negligence on the Moore side. And what the defendant, the United States, was trying to slow things down, is that these Moors took so long. Well, it don't matter, but we still gotta point out that the Moors did take too long. Nova Droual Lee came here in nineteen thirteen, we sitting here in the year twenty, twenty-four. More have been taking too long. Okay, what happened in nineteen oh-six? Moors, Moors gotta see what's happening here, because we're talking taxes, Moors wanna collect taxes, but first we gotta understand, what was the history? What is the United States was trying to tell the Moors in nineteen oh-six? Right? So the Moors should understand what I already have up here, what is this? It's the expatriation document of nineteen oh-six, all the Moors know about this, right? Page four fifty-nine and four sixty, right? Now, as the Moors know, look at this. Have you ever noticed that page four fifty-nine, by the time it mentions the word Morocco, it's, it's basically just a third of the page left, look. Look, look, this is one page, right? That's one page starting there. And you scroll down, scroll down, it was talking about Mexico, and then boom, it talks about Morocco all of a sudden. But it's the last part of the page, and then it has a page break, right there. So almost, almost like the last thirty-three percent, third of the page, it finally starts talking about Morocco, right? Then you push it, now the next page, page four sixty, page four fifty-nine and four sixty, all the Moors know. You go to the next page and look, look how much of the paper it takes up. You scroll down, scroll down, and there's the end of it, right there, Hafim Philip finishes, and it immediately goes in to talk about negligence. What am I saying? That this entire port portion right here that the United States decided to disclose could have all fit on one piece of paper. Listen. There it is. I copied pasted it, right? Using twelve farm, right? Twelve farm. I put it all on one piece of paper, right? If I scroll down, that's the end of it right there, that's one piece of paper. Listen to me. So that's one loose-leaf piece of paper, one loose-leaf piece of paper about the most important article of our treaties. How is it that the Moors have known about this for decades about the expatriation document of nineteen oh-six? All the Moors know about this. How is it that this language could fit on one piece of paper? But yet, none of the Grand Sheiks are exposing Article fifteen. If this is one piece of paper and all the Grand Sheiks notice when they read, they always stop right here. They always stop right here when you get to section, they say, section one, section two and three, and they say, er, they stop. They stop reading. And they never wanna finish and say, Article fifteen of the Treaty Madrid talks about the portal, the problem, the naturalized status of Moors. The Grand Sheiks don't read it out loud. It's only one piece of paper. You gonna sit here and convince me that the Grand Sheiks, whether it's temple or civic Moors, never read the other part of that one loose-leaf piece of paper, they only read half of it, and they just stopped? And they forgot to tell the Moors about Article fifteen? Go back and listen to the Grand Sheiks read out loud when they read this expatriation document. I promise you, go back and listen to them read, they stopped short. Right there, it's it, er, let me just stop right here, two and three, and they come up with a reason why they wanna read no further. Go back and listen to them. Where it is the United States is even talking about Article fifteen? Article fifteen of Treaty Madrid, I'm talking taxes, Moors wanna collect taxes, what do you have to do first? Go back through the portal like Dorothy? Or else you won't collect taxes, because you're still a naturalized American. How is it out of one hundred and sixty-six articles that the Grand Sheiks of both the temple and the civic Moors never talk you about Article fifteen? One hundred and sixty-six articles, how did I come up that mad? Well, the act downstairs has what? One hundred and twenty-three articles. Treaty Madrid has how many articles? Eighteen. Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six has twenty-five articles. So if you add those three treaties up, that's one hundred and sixty-six articles. And guess what the most important article is out of all one hundred and sixty-six? It's Article fifteen, and this is why the United States is pointing out. But yet, the Grand Sheiks don't talk about it. None of them. Temple or civic. You ever seen Kujo read this out loud? No. Go back and see if you catch Taj Tariq Bay reading Article fifteen out loud and breaking it down, you won't see it. You won't see Roz Mariah Bay of ArtiBay Publications reading it out loud. They don't read it. Why is that? Well, it's just one loose-leaf piece of paper, you gonna sit here and tell me you didn't see the other part of the loose-leaf paper? You gonna read half of it? Don't read the other half? Keep in mind, Taj Tariq Bay said on a video recently that he did not do what? The other half. He said it out loud himself, what's the other half, Taj? Tell all the Moors on Dr. D's show, the other half you left off. Maybe it's the other half of this Article fifteen that you should've told the Moors about, maybe that's the big contributing factor to it. Where are the Grand Sheiks of the temple? Read out loud to your members of your temple, Grand Sheiks, Article fifteen out loud, because the United States did it. Why am I talking about this? Because Moors wanna talk about taxes? But you don't wanna hold your leaders accountable for miseducating you, you just wanna talk about money. No, 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 we gonna talk about the problems that we've had, we need to fix these problems. They ain't about making no money, it's about correcting our mistakes first. Then go and collect the money. Because as long as we keep leaving these sellouts and this misinformation out here, then Moors, black people are waking up by the day, running into this misinformation. By the hundreds, every day, black people waking up saying, oh, we Moors Americans? And guess what? They go right into that rat trap. Get caught up. Lose their houses, cars, money. They lose their job, they lose their children. They losing everything. Y'all wanna talk about collecting taxes? How about we collect and round up these people who've been lying to us? How about we start there? But y'all don't wanna talk about that, y'all don't wanna talk about the truth. Y'all just wanna talk about money all the time. This is ridiculous. But I know I'm gonna talk about taxes because it's a part of the ICJ case, but we gotta talk about the fact that we've been negligent under latches. What does latches mean? We're trying to latch on to something that we think we have a right to. The defendant, who's the United States of America, also is latching on to what it is they think they're entitled to. So now we're playing tug-of-war over rights. And it should've never been like that. Nova came to us in nineteen thirteen, and even for Nova Droual Lee, all the treaties came out. Nova wasn't doing nothing but trying to do what? Read the treaties out loud. Noble wasn't doing nothing but trying to do what? Read the treaties out loud. Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six. Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Act of Seres nineteen oh-six. Treaty Affairs nineteen twelve, all these things came out before Noble Druali. He was just trying to enforce what's already been written. Taking us too long. We're talking negligence, listen, what do I have up here? Moors wanna collect taxes, okay, where are you collecting taxes at? Tell me the name of the jurisdiction. You wanna collect taxes, okay, let's talk about it, alright, here we go. Right here I got what? United States of America, number one. I got United States of America in Morocco, number two. Then I got Moore Science Temple of America, number three. Number four, Moore Science Temple of Morocco, that should be the proper name. That's number four, number five, Moore Science Temple in Morocco, that should be the proper name. Last one, Empire of Morocco, what's this all about? You see where I highlighted of, of, in, of, of, in, of, you see? Why did I highlight that? Because the Moors been talking, the word of is a boogie man. The Moors will talk the word of is a bad word. The Moors been miseducated. We claim we knew the eight parts of speech, but we really didn't understand it. Of is a what? Preposition, eight parts of speech, preposition, right? Why am I talking about this? Cause we gotta understand what is law all about, procedural law, substantive law? Because I had Moors tell me early on, uh, Jay, why are you using the word of in your documents? I'm serious. I had Moors asking me, why are you using the word of in your documents? Let me give you an example. Early on with AMPA, when we established our constitution in the preamble, your notice. Right here, I'm gonna finish the sentence right here in our preamble, look how it reads, it says, I'm gonna start here, okay, and do. See, first of all, we the Moors, right, let's start right here. We the Moors in Morocco, okay, so we're in Morocco, we're gonna talk about that. Last sentence says, do establish this law of restoration for the organic state. Alodim Moors Premium Anti Colorado. You see right here this comma? In our constitution preamble, it should have said state of Alodim Moors Premium Anti Colorado. When we first wrote the constitution, I had arguments with some of the Moors, cause they didn't wanna use the word of. Cause Taj Me Bay told everybody the word of was a bad word. So I'm sitting there arguing with my fellow constituents, they should have said state of Alodim Moors Premium Anti Colorado. But they just decided to add a comma, and then I got tired of arguing, said, I don't wanna argue about this, let's just roll with it. Now I gotta come back and fix it, I gotta admit what we was doing wrong, but I knew at the time, it, the grammar was off. And anybody who reads it, they kinda pause right here, cause it doesn't make sense, it just says state, that says Alodim Moors Premium Anti Colorado. Everybody knows an of should have been there. But we didn't add it, why? Cause we had a Moors American mentality. That was the problem, we've been miseducated about the eight parts of speech. Listen. So when you look at the United States of America. Then you got the United States of America in Morocco. Moore Science Temple of America, let's just pause right there, so you got all this of, of, you got in Morocco, of. You need these words to complete a sentence, your grammar's correct. But let's break it down, cause the more of them miseducated so bad, they out there trying to write documents and remove the word of. Like of was the problem the whole time, no, the problem is you call yourself Moors American, that's the problem. The problem is you call yourself black, that's the problem, the problem you call yourself Indian, that's the problem. The problem is you keep thinking it's Atlanta, America, and it's Morocco, that's the problem. The problem is you won't read the charter like Barack H. Obama said to do, that's the problem, the problem is the leadership. That's the problem, it's not the word of. But we gotta talk about it, because these are misconceptions that unfortunately I gotta talk about and correct. Listen. What is an of? Let's look up the word of, shall we? Okay, Brother Dre, of, of, preposition, one, expressing the relationship between a part and a whole. Okay, Paul, so of is a preposition, eight parts of speech. But more say, more don't know, nobody knows the eight parts of speech, then y'all turn around and say, of is a bad word. It's a part of eight parts of speech, it's a preposition. Says expressing the relationship between a part and a whole. So it's just a relationship, of creates a relationship. It's about to relate to something, cause it's a preposition, of, okay? Listen. What is a preposition, Brothers Dre?
Preposition, noun, grammar, one, a word governing and usually preceding. A noun or pronoun and expressing a relation to another word or element in the clause.
Pause, read again.
Preposition, noun, grammar, one, a word governing and usually preceding a noun or pronoun. And expressing a relation to another word or element in the clause.
Pause. So the word of is a preposition, and a preposition's about proper grammar. Then you turn around and says, a word governing. And usually preceding a noun or pronoun, and expressing a relation, a relationship. To another word or element in the clause, so prepositions create a relationship. With the next word that's coming up, that's a what? Noun. But it's a relationship, okay, so listen, listen. So when they say United States of America, what's the relationship? So the United States is in a relationship with what? America. Right, it's a relationship of America, right? So right here, watch this, Moore Science Temple of America. So you saying the Moore Science Temple is in a relationship with America. Listen, don't go deeper. I want you to go deeper, of, of, Neil Wester Ditcher there, listen, pay attention. Brother Dre?
Of, definition and meaning. A you, uh, used as a function word to indicate belonging or possessive relationship.
Pause, read again.
Used as a function word to indicate belonging or possessive relationship.
Pause, read again.
As a function word to indicate belonging or a possessive relationship.
Okay. So the word of, Chris, it indicates belonging or possessive relationship. So of creates a possession status, a relationship and possession, remember that, listen. So when you say you're the Moore Science Temple of America, the of is a preposition set up a relationship and a possession. You saying the Moore Science Temple is a possession of America. Relationship and possession of America, that's what you're saying, when you're claiming the Moore Science Temple is where you getting your birth rights. How you getting birth rights through a church, i.e. a temple, that belongs in relationship and a possession of America? Listen. So let's look up here, United States of America, so United States is what? In a relationship with America? And United States is a possession of America, doesn't that just make sense? That America possesses the United States, that makes sense. But then listen, the United States of America in Morocco. But wait, what's wrong with this in? You see how the sentence changed? Of America, so United States of America is a relationship and possession of America, then they throw in this in Morocco, but wait, timeout. What's the in, Brother Dre?
In, preposition, one, expressing the situation of something that is. Or appears to be enclosed or surrounded by something else.
Pause, read again.
Expressing, in, preposition, one, expressing the situation of something that is or appears to be enclosed or surrounded by something else.
So, when United States of America uses the in, uses the in. When United States of America puts in treaties or political correspondence, saying United States of America. In Morocco, they saying that they're enclosed in Morocco, they're surrounded by Morocco as the jurisdiction. So United States of America is in Morocco, they're surrounded by Morocco, right? They're enclosed in Morocco, listen, in. In, in, preposition, grammar. Expressing the situation of something that is or appears to be enclosed or surrounded by something else. What's the something else? Morocco. So United States of America is the meaning that's surrounded and enclosed in Morocco. Listen, so the of and in are prepositions, eight parts of speech. Of represents a relationship, right, or possession of the noun. The in represents when you're, now something's in something, it's surrounded by it. Or enclosed by it, so United States of America is enclosed by Morocco. United States of America is surrounded by Morocco, i.e. United States of America is surrounded by Moroccan laws, regulations. Therefore, they have to pay taxation, because they're in Morocco. So, when you go back and you look at of, right? Of, a definition, of, of, uses a function word to indicate belonging. Or possessive relationship, so the Moore Science Temple. Is claiming that the Moore Science Temple of America, you claiming America is claiming possession of the Moore Science Temple, it's a jurisdiction. However, you should be saying what? Moore Science Temple of Morocco, that's jurisdiction. You should be saying what? Moore Science Temple in Morocco, that way, the Moore Science Temple was surrounded by Morocco. And enclosed in Morocco, but instead, you said you are of America, you're a possession of America. You're naturalized, you're the property of America, until you stop acquiescing. Look at this. So the Empire of Morocco, so the Empire is in a relationship, right? Is a possession of Morocco. You see? So when AMPA had established their constitution. And we're arguing with people who still had a Moors American mentality, and they wanna say the state of AMPA. It would have created a relationship of proper grammar, of a preposition, eight parts of speech. It should have said state of, so the state of Alodim Moors Premium, so the state would have been in relations to AMPA. And and it would have been a possession, the state would have been the possession of AMPA, you see? But the Moors American mentality caused us to not include that word, so we gotta do what? Go back and revise the constitution, as we continue to learn at varying stages of of advancement. As I said, AMPA can admit when we made mistakes, we're at varying stages of advancement. But we had to get out this old Moors American theology. We did not know the eight parts of speech, I keep qualifying it. I keep showing you that Moors Americans don't know how to read, read means to what? Use forensics, right, to comprehend, this is not proper grammar. Can't say state comma, Alodim Moors Premium Anti Colorado, when you read the whole sentence, it don't make sense, something's missing in grammar. All because the Moors will talk that the word of is a bad word. But yet, they turn around and use it in their own name, of their title, when they say. That they're the Moore Science Temple of America, that's possession. So so why would Moors wanna keep doing this to themselves? Listen, I'm talking latches, what it latches about? Negligence. We've been negligent in just even understanding words. Listen, all Moors can be mad now, listen to, listen. Divine constitution and bylaws of the Moore Science Temple, this is the bylaw of the constitution they've been claiming. Now, we're all family, I'm a Moore, you a Moore, but we gotta talk about this in this seven articles. Right, seven articles that basically fits on one page, it's just seven articles. If I go Ctrl F, and I look up the word America, the word America is mentioned here ten times. Out of seven articles. Guess how many times the word Morocco is mentioned? Zero. Guess how many times the word Moroccan is mentioned? Zero. Guess how many times the word more is mentioned? Zero. Guess how many times the word empire is mentioned? Zero. Guess how many times the word Sultan is mentioned? Zero. Guess how many times the word treaty is mentioned? Zero. But yet, the word America is mentioned ten times. So what is the purpose and intent? When you keep putting the word America in your constitution, it never mentioned Morocco, Moroccan, more. Empire, Sultan, or treaty. What you're saying is, you're accepting your subjugation status. Now, I have nothing against the constitution for the Moore Science Temple, if that's what you're saying, your constitution is fine. But how are you gonna turn around and say you're trying to uplift fallen humanity? When all the treaties talking about Morocco, Moroccans, more, the empire, treaties, and Sultan. And none of those words are even in the constitution you're claiming. There's no mention even matriarchs. There's no three presidents government talking about how the matriarchs have equality in this constitution as being lawmakers. No matriarchal council. Matter of fact, Noble Druali didn't even sign it, where's Noble Druali's signature? I'm being sincere right now, he, I'm not being condescending. I'm just asking a straight up question. All constitutions have signatures and dates. What's the date of this constitution? Don't nobody know. Where's the signature on the constitution? Don't nobody know. Did any women sign the constitution? Don't nobody know. You know what's happening? It's called worship. You gotta understand what's happened to us as a people, we've been pumped by our own people to accept things as is. Even though they can't even prove that Noble Druali even wrote this constitution. Now, I love Noble, but don't just put words in his mouth, show me the proof that Noble wrote it. I'm not trying to say he didn't write it, but how can you prove you have a constitution and it don't even have dates and signatures? It's never been ratified, deposited, and promulgated in accordance to international law. And it's been out since the early nineteen hundreds, we're in here twenty twenty-four, and no one's taking the time. To take this constitution and deposit it with the United Nations in accordance to Article one oh-two. And you know why you can't? Because you claiming the wrong nationality, that's number one. Number two, you're not even mentioning the right name of the state, it's Morocco, that's why you can't turn it in. Cause it don't mention the defined territory, the name of the land. The nationality is wrong, it keeps saying Moors American, that's not a nationality, it's an adjective. Compound adjective at that, describing what now? America. So we've delayed our own justice. We gotta have some humility and understand, yeah, we want, we wanna be all big and bad against the colonists, I'm okay with that. Why? Because we can enforce our rights, our laws, we're entitled to tell them to pay up. But we need to have some humility and also say, we messed up. That's the problem with the Moors, you don't wanna admit that we was wrong. Listen, look at all these years we wasted. Right here, I got a hundred and fifteen years since nineteen ten. I could have started this in nineteen oh-six, it would have been a hundred and nineteen years, but I just started with a fresh ten. Nineteen ten, all the way over to year twenty twenty-four. Nineteen ten, all the way over to year twenty twenty-four, is one hundred and fifteen years we've delayed our own justice. Look at a little bit of history, right? Why am I showing you the history? Because United States is talking latches. They said these Moors delayed their own justice, they didn't do things in a timely manner. Do we really have to give these Moors back this stuff? Since the Moors been selling out their own people and dragging their feet? Well, yeah, we gotta pay them, but understand, United States likes to throw stuff at the wall cause they like legal arguments, just to stall, deny, defend, but at the same time, guess what? They do have a point. Even though it's pointless, but they do have a point. It's ill-founded, but they do have a point that we've been dragging our feet. We have been maintaining our due diligence, we've been negligent in enforcing our own rights. And look at this. So, the Act of the Seres comes out in nineteen oh six. We didn't enforce the Act of the Seres in nineteen oh six as the Moors government. Then look what happens, nineteen twelve Treaty Affairs comes out and France takes over, cause the Moors haven't been woke up. Noble Drahly comes out in nineteen thirteen. He's trying to wake up the Moors on his own. But then we move forward nineteen twenty, what happened in nineteen twenty? The convention, right, the covenant on the League of Nations comes out. Cause France has now moved the diplomatic body of Tangier where the original United Nations headquarters was. Cause United Nations headquarters originally was in Tangier in nineteen oh six. Now, France has moved it in nineteen twenty. Did the Moors wake up and start making claims? No. Cause we had to deposit a constitution with France and the Sultan to say us Moors over here in the West want our independence, that we want our rights under the Empire Morocco. We could have done that, did we do it? No. So, nineteen twenty comes out, alright, fast forward, right? Now, at nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen twenty-nine, what's happened nineteen twenty-eight? Moor Science Temple. Nineteen twenty-nine, they assassinated their brother Noble. And we didn't get nothing done to get it off the ground. Your brother Noble tried his best to tell us that we're what? Moroccans. We turn around and say we were absolute true Americans. So, what happens in nineteen thirty? A bunch of fringe groups take over the Moors movement. Imposters. In nineteen thirty, got all broken up, Noble's momentum starts to go left. Cause everybody starts to sell out. Nationals start calling us black. The Moor Science Temple goes left because the FBI is all, all up in their Kool-Aid. So, right here, night, so we didn't get nothing done in nineteen thirty, nineteen thirty-three comes around, what the Moors do? Resolution seventy-five to say we're former Moors. And now, we've been Americanized, nineteen thirty-three, this is Moor Science Temple agreed to. We still didn't decolonize. We still didn't rise. Now, you fast forward throughout the thirties, you come over here to the forties, what happened in nineteen forty-five? Charter of the United Nations, Articles one fifty-five and seventy-three, Moors could have decolonized then, did they do it? No. What happens next? Nineteen forty-eight, what happens? Universal Declaration of Human Rights comes out, giving Moors back their rights as human beings. Did they do anything with it? No. Right? So, now, you fast forward, you got nineteen forty-nine, you got nineteen fifty-two. Right, what happened in nineteen fifty-two? France versus United States of America. Did the Moors rise up once the case came out? That said the Moors were acquiescing, all the Moors had to do is stop acquiescing, did we rise up? No. Yeah, nineteen fifty-six, what happened in nineteen fifty-six? Now, United States of America is relinquishing counsel court and told Muhammad the fifth, you mind if we put these Moors in the local courts? They put all the Moors in the local courts as Americans. Did the Moors rise up? No. To make the proper claims on the decolonization? No. You fast forward now nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty-nine, now Muhammad the fifth, the United States making power moves to get strike what? Article fifteen of the Treaty Madrid. To get rid of what nationality? Moroccan nationality. Did the Moors rise up? No. Did we make a proper claim to decolonize? No. Then you fast forward nineteen sixty, Resolution fifteen fourteen comes out for the independence of our state and people. Did we do anything? No. We sat back and watched the Africans claim their independence. What were we asking for? Civil rights, which is internal independence, I mean, excuse me, internal dependence. We became integrated into the American fabric even deeper. We didn't become independent, we became further dependent under civil rights instead of human rights and self-determination of our own state. But did the Moors rise up? No. Now, all throughout the sixties, the Africans are decolonizing and getting their independence, and what's happening over here? Assassinations. John F. Kennedy nineteen sixty-three, your brother El-Had, Malik Shabazz, your brother Malcolm X, nineteen sixty-five. He hanging out the UN, he's gone. Nineteen sixty-eight, Martin Luther King's gone, Robert F. Kennedy's gone. Did the Moors rise up? No. Guess who rose up? The KKK came marching down Pennsylvania Avenue with their hoods on. Where was the Moors' fezzes going down Pennsylvania Avenue? We didn't do nothing in the sixties, we were hiding in the temples. There was no bow ties out there in the sixties, the bow ties was hiding in the mosque. Listen. All, in nineteen seventy, Resolution twenty-six twenty-five comes out from the United Nations about friendly relations and decolonization. Did the Moors rise up? No. So, all the seventies, we didn't do nothing, all the eighties, we didn't do nothing. The nineties roll around and Farrakhan does a million man march, and after that, he got his money, he rolls out. He goes on a rock star tour, he goes over to Africa and hanging out in the Middle East. He travels around and, and, and within thirty-eight days, he'd have hit nineteen countries in thirty-eight days after the million man march. He bounced. During that time, Barack H. Obama becomes a senator in nineteen ninety-seven. Farrakhan just running around signing autographs, ain't doing nothing for the people. Next, what happens? The Moors still didn't rise up, even in nineteen ninety-five, the Moors would say, oh, hell no, Farrakhan can't do a million man march. The fezzes need to come out next. Where was the fezz? Where was the Moor Science Temple to rise up after what Farrakhan did to tell everybody it was black? Why didn't the Moors come back right after that and say, no, we're not? We should have had our own march. It didn't happen. So, the nineties, we wasted time, then the two thousands ran around, right? What happened in two thousand one? Khalid Muhammad loses his life. Khalid Muhammad part of Nation Islam. He gets ostracized for some reason. They do an attempt on his life, they shoot him up, he lives. Next you know, he dies from some other natural sources. Yeah, right. Why is Khalid Muhammad dead? Oh, because he had the audacity to come out and say Farid Muhammad learned from Noble Drahly. This is what Khalid Muhammad said out loud, Farid Muhammad learned from Noble Drahly. That tripled down Elijah Muhammad. Elijah Muhammad taught Farrakhan. But they didn't wanna tell Malcolm. Where else is good brother Khalid Muhammad gone? Cause he had the audacity to come out and say what? I'm a Moor. Got system up to know I'm a Moor. Now, knowing my heart, my soul, I'm a Moor. And wouldn't tell you for more, if I was a Moor, if I didn't mean. And I mean what I say and say what I mean. Next you know, he's gone. Cause they knew his next step was, he gonna pick up right where El-Had, Malik Shabazz left off and go to UN next. Let me ask you a question. Since good brother Khalid Muhammad knew about the Moor Science Temple, keep in mind, Moor Science Temple was in Chicago, Illinois. Nation Islam main headquarters in Chicago, Illinois, they all know about each other. Why wasn't Khalid Muhammad hanging out with the Moors of the Moor Science Temple? Khalid Muhammad was a soldier. He was about moving forward, getting things done. Why wasn't he hanging out with the Moor Science Temple? Because he knew what? They were procrastinators, he knew it. But yet, he know, he knew Farid Muhammad learned from the Moor Science Temple. He knew that Elijah Muhammad was running around with a fezz on. But yet, Khalid Muhammad still did not go to the Moor Science Temple to try to get them to get together and come out the temple and do what they need to do to enforce the rights of the people. He didn't mess around with them at all. That should tell the Moors something, that Khalid Muhammad knew about the Moors and still didn't mess around with the Moor Science Temple. You know why? He's a soldier. He ain't no paper tiger. He knew the Moor Science Temple was sold out, ain't serious about uplifting fallen humanity. I'm keeping it real, tell me why Khalid Muhammad didn't hang out with the Moor Science Temple? They both was in Chicago. Why is he hanging out with Black Panthers instead of the Moors who claiming they got treaty rights? You gotta hear what I'm saying. What else happened? After Khalid's gone, now we come up on, uh, uh, two thousand five, uh, two thousand seven, uh, two thousand nine, all, all this stuff is happening up in these years cause Barack H. Obama is starting to wake up. He's coming into office. He goes to Kyrgyzstan, tell the Moors all about the treaties cause he knew the Russian indigenous people came out in two thousand seven. Finally, somebody's talking about the Moors from a political perspective of the United States. But did the Moors wake up in two thousand nine and started enforcing the charter? No. Barack H. Obama signed the Russian indigenous people twenty-ten, did the Moors go and read the charter? No, they did nothing. So, we got all these years going by, and finally, in twenty twenty-one, Ampac signs a constitution. Declared our independence as Moors where? In Morocco and not in America. So, why don't I go through that timeline? To show you that under latches, the Moors been negligent. And United States say, look at all this time these Moors wasted, now they're trying to make some claims, so you gotta understand how the United States thinks. But the Moors, if you be honest and say, yeah, we wasting a lot of time, we were miseducated. Isn't that what Abdullah Il-Talib mostly based in, August twenty twenty-three, said his growth and development was prohibited for twenty-five years? We as Moors gotta get to work. We gotta stop procrastinating. Stop blaming your problems on the Congress, we as Moors are half the problem. We gotta get to work. All this, all this paralysis of analysis is ridiculous that we've done for a hundred years. It's time to get going. We gotta move forward. Moors wanna collect taxes, they wanna talk about money, but they don't wanna take the time to collect, to check all the applicable boxes. This thing is about procedural law and substantive law of your treaties and laws. The two go hand in hand, you must check the boxes. Listen. What do I have up here? Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve. France was responsible for collecting taxes. Why? Because the Moors, i.e. the Moors government wasn't collecting tax. See right here says in Morocco, your brother Drake, can you, can you read this from the top?
Protective treaty between France and Morocco, signed at Fez on March thirty nineteen twelve. Excuse me, the government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty desirous of inaugurating a regular regime in Morocco based upon in, internal order and general security, which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure the economic development of the country. Have agreed upon the following.
Okay, Article one.
Article one, the government of the French Republic and His Majesty the Sultan have agreed to establish in Morocco a new regime compromising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory.
Skip down, last sentence.
It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Moors.
Alright, so the reformed Sharifian Moors is the Sultan reforming the Moors, the Moors government, so you got the Sultan. Right, the Sultan and the Moors, which is the Moors government, was supposed to be doing what along with France? Establishing what? A new regime, right, new regime, right, a new government, what's regime mean? Government. A reformed government to do what? Start to deal with economic and financial reforms, you see that? Now, keep in mind, the Treaty Affairs was dissolved March second nineteen fifty-six. Why do we keep reading it? Because you gotta go back and look at the history of what the obligations was. See, France was doing what the Moors were supposed to do. So, you can go back and see what France was trying to do, this is the same thing the Moors should be doing now in the twenty-first century. It's about collecting taxes, that's economics, look right here, economics, that's the charter. So, France is helping to put the, put together the charter, they, they granted powers to the United States of America and the other secretary powers to the Charter of the United Nations. France had to grant that power, cause France had the pen overseeing the Empire Morocco. And France knew that the Moors supposed to be collecting all the economic taxes, you see what's happening? Look at Article seven, just a moment, take it, Article seven.
Article seven, the government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty reserve unto themselves the right to determine by mutual agreement the basis of a financial, uh, reorganization, which while respecting the rights conferred upon bondholders of the Moroccan public loans, shall make it possible to guarantee the commitments of the Sharifian treasury and to collect regularly the revenues of the empire.
See that? Last sentence? So, the Moors were supposed to be doing this, and France ended up coming in and taking over the pen. And one of the obligations of France in cooperation with the Moors government was to do what? To collect regularly the revenues of the empire, you see that? To collect what? Taxes. And guess who recognized this treaty? The United States of America even recognized France's power of the pen to oversee the Empire Morocco. So, you gotta understand, there's so much history there, that the United States of America can't get out of it because they even recognized France controlling the pen. And France wasn't claiming to be Moors, they weren't claiming to be Moroccans per se. So, imagine when the real Moors, the real Moroccans of the empire come back and start to enforce reforms to maintain what? Collections of revenues. If France could collect it, imagine the Moors collecting it. We have an absolute right, cause France wasn't claiming to be Moors. And they was collecting taxes on behalf of what? The empire, you see what's happening? So, as I start to close out, what, what, what should Moors take away from today? You, you gotta understand, Moors, that we are negligent, we've delayed our own justice. Yes, the United States is aware that they owe the Empire Morocco taxes and they got the bylaws, but the only way for that to happen, it starts with us. There is no taxation without representation. Where's the representation of the Moors government? The Moors in their own one-on-one questionnaire said what? The title of the ruler in Morocco is who? The Sultan. I think that's question number fifty-one or something like that in the one-on-ones. My question to the Moor Science Temple is, where's the Sultan? Where's the Sultan at, Temple Moors? Where's the Sultan at? Uh, uh, Organization Moors, Civic Moors, where's the Sultan? I didn't get into this movement until technically the year twenty twenty. Technically, when I started to teach classes and get out in the public and start telling people I was a Moorish American. I only been studying for about four or six years, that's it. Before I got in this movement, where was the Sultan for the Moors giving back the Sultan's the ruler? Why haven't the Moors elected a Sultan by now? This is part of your own question, so I'm questioning you. Where's the Sultan? If you're saying that's the ruler, but the ruler where? In Morocco. Not in America. So, you gotta understand, Moors, yes, we wasting a lot of time. And the game is over. The, the whole sellout game is over. The coin tell pro is coming to an end. It's time for us now to return to Morocco as family. It's time for us to protect the state of Empire Morocco as constituents, as peers of the government, and enforce our sovereign rights to govern over the great enterprise coming on as the Empire Morocco. But we have to stop procrastinating. And unfortunately, we have to start adjudicating those who are obstructionist and columnist. I am with that, Islam.